Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Baxter and Brainerd Candidate Forum. Welcome to those in attendance this evening. Thank you for coming out tonight or watching on Facebook. We'd like to start off the evening by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone could please stand, face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. My name is Tyler Glenn. I'm the Executive Director of the Brainerd Lakes Area Economic Development Corporation, and I will serve as your moderator this evening. Tonight's forums are brought to you by the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the Brainerd Dispatch, with support from the Brainerd Lakes Area Community Foundation and Bladech. We also thank the Brainerd Police Department for hosting us here this evening. Please remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking so that everyone can hear. Also, please hold your applause until the forum has ended. We ask you politely to turn off or silence your cellphone. No photography or recording will be allowed during this forum, except for those that are recording this forum. Today's event is livestreamed on the Brainerd Lakes Chamber Facebook page and will be available for viewing from now until Election Day on their website, brainerdlakechamber.com. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the forum organizers. None of the organizers endorse candidates or political parties. Please refer to your programs for information on the races. You're welcome to submit written questions for the candidates, either on the question cards provided or by posting a comment on Facebook. If you need a question card, they are available at the back of the room. Or please raise your hand at any time and a volunteer will give one to you. Please keep in mind that submitted questions remain anonymous and must be addressed to all candidates. Those that are unclear, hostile, or of personal nature will not be used. We reserve the right to screen the questions and may rephrase or consolidate them. If you do not get a chance to ask your question or an answer is unclear, feel free to speak with the candidates after the forum. Each candidate will have 1 and 1/2 minutes for opening statements. Then I will ask a series of prepared questions with up to a 1-minute response. Candidates will also have 30 seconds to make closing statements. We will rotate the order for answering. Before we begin, let's give the candidates, community sponsors, event venue, and volunteers a round of applause. We will begin with the City of Baxter candidates, then take a brief break to transition to the City of Brainerd candidates in about an hour. Before we begin, I would like to -- I have already covered these few points. That's my bad. So, we will begin with opening statements, and we are doing this in alphabetical order. So, Amy Bogart, please.
Not reverse alphabetical order?
You have 1 and 1/2 minutes for an opening statement.
All right. So, my name's Amy Bogart. My husband and I moved to Baxter about 16 years ago, and I always like to say that we are not from Baxter originally, but we chose for our kids to be from here. We love the community, and we've been very involved in athletics and in coaching and in schools and churches and everything else. And at some point, it just became obvious that it was time to do a little bit more. The reason, or my why, I guess, for being here is that I just, I felt like, so my husband and I own two family-owned businesses in the community here, and it just felt like maybe it was time to have somebody on the board, or another person on the board, who, you know, collected sales tax and paid in sales tax every quarter and had that frame of mind when making some of the decisions about where things are spent and how they go and things. That's about all I have, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Ms. Connie Liscio.
As most of you know, I am running for a second term, and I remember when newly elected four years ago, we were given the opportunity to attend a conference for newly-elected public service and city council members. And the first question, they asked us to raise our hand, "How many of you are happy and proud that you were elected?" Of course, the majority of people raised their hand. The second question was, "How many of you now wonder what the heck have you gotten yourself into?" And everybody's hands shot up, mine probably first and foremost. What I have learned, though, is what I've gotten myself into is an organization, a city council, a staff that truly cares, that respects one another, is so knowledgeable, decades and years of experience. And I've also learned that I'm a voice of one, and I certainly don't believe that I do have all the answers. I don't know that any one person does, but I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I feel I can only get better with more experience. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Zach Tabit.
Thank you. I'm Zach Tabit, and I'm running for reelection to the Baxter City Council. I want to thank the organizers for taking the time tonight. I really appreciate the civic engagement here. I believe I bring a unique perspective to the city council, in part because I have a unique background. I worked my way through college doing road construction during the summers. I've been a police officer in both a small city and a large city in St. Paul. I've helped people create financial plans as a financial advisor, and now I help provide business-related training to nonprofits across the region. In my time on the council, I have supported streamlining processes, improving technology, and cutting the cost of our infrastructure. In the past four years, I've been honored to support council votes that have done things like help bring the new elementary school to town, the new large acreage of parkland on the south end of town, allowed businesses like Menards to expand. New businesses have come into the 371 corridor, and the large condo development near Walmart are all things that I have voted in support of. If I'm reelected, I plan to advocate for a more active economic development authority and to encourage the city to be more creative in how we support development that can benefit the community. I believe Baxter is positioned to become an even more attractive place to start a business, raise a family, and send your kids to school in the coming years. Again, I'm Zach Tabit, and I'm asking the people of Baxter to reelect me to the city council.
Well, thank you to all of you, and we will now transition into our prepared questions. Again, these questions, as they're prepared, you have 1 minute to respond to each of these. We will begin with Connie.
Wait a minute. She's beat.
It'll come back.
Okay.
Question number one: Why are you running for city council, and what will be on your top priority if you are elected?
I'm running basically because I live a life of integrity. I care so much. I know the importance of a sense of community. I'm told that I'm very approachable, and I have a lot of empathy, whether or not I agree with someone or not. And all of those characteristics, I think, make me a good civic leader. Public office is a public trust, and I think I'm a trustworthy person, and I want to continue to prove that to individuals on the city. And a priority would be to, I guess, manage growth. Growth isn't necessarily an issue. We are definitely growing in Baxter, as everyone knows, but I think looking at the long-range plan for the city and making sure the development that does happen fits into that long-range plan.
Thank you. I will ask the questions again. Next is Mr. Tabit. Why are you running for city council, and what will be your top priority if you are elected?
I think public service is an important part of my life. Between prior jobs and my current job, as well as the last four years that I've spent on the city council, I really think it's important that people serve the communities where they live, and that's something that I'm trying to continue to do by running for reelection. The number-one priority for me would really be getting more activity on the economic development front. We have an EDA that I think has room for growth, and there are aspects of our city's long-range plan that I would like to work on and add development that can help broaden the tax base and bring more and a diversity of businesses to town, rather than just solely focusing on retail, as has just kind of naturally developed within our corridor.
Thank you. Amy, I will repeat the question again. Why are you running for city council, and what will be your top priority if you are elected?
So, I mean, I already kind of mentioned that my, one of my big reasons for wanting to run is just looking for diversity of backgrounds on the board, as far as being a business owner. But one of my other reasons that I decided that now might be a good time is that our economy is slowing. Some people say it's a recession, and yet we have higher property taxes because of increased values. We're also looking at additional levy and things like that. And so, I just, it's very important to me that we are wise in how we're approaching our spending as we're going into this and making sure we're respectful of people's money. My top priority, I guess, would be that, you know, just being involved in asking the questions and looking for solutions, creative solutions if necessary, going forward to encourage economic growth while also being responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now transition onto question two. We will begin this question. First to respond will be Zach Tabit. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
It all comes down to making sure that we are taking into account the quality that we currently have and the expectations that the residents have built up. So, there's a lot of things that have room for wiggle in that, and it's all about making sure that we are keeping the cost as low as possible while still providing that mowed lawns in the park and snow that's been plowed quickly so people can get to work all at the same time. If you go too low, you end up with people who can't get to work in the morning, and if you go too high, you have an absolutely immaculate lawn that costs way too much to maintain.
Thank you. We'll transition to Amy. I will, again, what is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
I would say that depending on, depending on the year, that would be different. It depends on how the economy and the community is doing and how we're doing on our tax base. The most effective way to raise revenue is to increase the amount of business and things being done in the community. That's the most effective way doing it. Anyways, I would say, you know, infrastructure is important. Maintaining our roads is important. Maintaining, like you said, snow plowing and things like that, because there's definitely a cost to not having those done. And that's kind of a secondary tax on our residents, because if you can't get to work on time, you're missing money and hours earned. So, like I said before, some of that might be creative, but that would be my philosophy. Was that the word you used?
Yep. Connie, I will repeat the question. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes, fees, and assessments?
I think a term that we would use in teaching would be consistently inconsistent. I think it's very important to have codes and expectations and ordinances and to gather information, are those working, and if they're not working, to use another educational term, being able to monitor and adjust, because obviously, what we've lived through in the last 3 and 1/2 years was nothing you could ever plan for. So, I do think it's important that you revisit and you are flexible and talk to the people that have the wealth of information that Baxter does have.
Thank you. Onto, we'll move on to question three. Amy, we will begin with you. Suppose the city council is tackling a controversial issue. If elected, how would you decide which way to vote?
It's very hypothetical, because we don't know what controversial issue it is. I believe that, you know, we're here representing the community, so getting community input and seeing where other people and the people, our neighbors and near and far, have to say on any given topic. Sometimes there's hard decisions to be made, and it might not be popular, but it's necessary. And in that case, it's one of those education things and making sure that that line of communication is open with the people that are impacted first and foremost in our community.
Connie, suppose the city council is tackling a controversial issue. If elected, how would you decide which way to vote?
There have been times in the last few years where I've gone into a meeting and I knew a vote was going to be taken, and I was quite certain how I was going to vote in my mind. And then, as more citizens from Baxter spoke at that meeting, my opinions changed. And I think I'm a person who empathizes, and I'm also a person who is willing to listen and not be too proud to not be able to admit that I was wrong, because when you admit you are wrong, it's also an opportunity for growth. So, after many sleepless nights, too, there's been often times when I've just had to vote with my heart and with my gut and just hope and pray it was the right thing.
Zach, suppose the city council is tackling a controversial issue. If elected, how would you decide which way to vote?
My style with this kind of a situation is to do an incredible amount of research and spend as much time as I can working on the topic from as many angles as I can. I'm thinking of one that was a particularly controversial situation, right when all the issues were happening with the pandemic a couple of years ago, where I had spent time calling experts in the field. I cold-called an expert, asking some information. I asked residents what they had to say about it, talked internally with my family. And as Connie said, probably didn't sleep a few nights, but just do my absolute best to educate myself to the point where I feel like there's not much more to learn once the end of that meeting occurs and we get the final word from the people who are in the room. So, it's over-prepare, I guess, is my response.
Thank you. Onto question four. Connie, you will be first up to answer this question. What do you believe is the top issue facing Baxter businesses, and how would you work with them to support economic growth in the city?
The top issue, I'm sure, well, I'm supposing it would be, how did they grow their business? How do they stay profitable? How do they expand with the business they have now, only to make it more appealing to the city itself, while at the same time having to deal with what some believe are too many ordinances, too many restrictions? And I guess that's where I would go back to my line of thinking where perhaps some ordinances need to be changed, perhaps some zoning needs to be changed to allow for future growth. So, I guess being flexible and listening.
Thank you. Zach, what do you believe is the top issue facing Baxter businesses, and how would you work with them to support economic growth in the city?
I think it's probably the greater atmosphere that we're dealing with, with competition from companies that aren't located anywhere near here, who can send a product to Baxter in 48 hours without the people who want to buy them having to step outside their door. I mean, our businesses are very dependent on large numbers of people coming through and spending money here. So, my take on that would be to work with our local economic development entities to make, continue to make Baxter a place where people want to come, and they want to spend money, and they want to spend time, especially as we're kind of a tourist area, and that's an important aspect of it. Keeping our roads and infrastructure passable and easy to navigate so that we can continue to have a good tourist crowd coming through and spending money here.
Thank you. Amy, what do you believe is the top issue facing Baxter businesses, and how would you work with them to support economic growth in the city?
I would say, just because I have 60 seconds, I would second what they said, but I would also like to add, because I think it's kind of an obvious, helping businesses grow is, you know, helping with their expenses, supporting their growth, supporting the people that will be their customers, whether that's tourists, whether that's people that live in our community and beyond. I mean, we have a lot of communities around us that come into Brainerd. But I also know that people are still struggling to recover from the last couple of years, and so I think ensuring that we are cognizant of that as we grow, so that businesses that are recovering and haven't quite gotten there yet, I mean, this is maybe too much information to share, but as a small business owner, just the trackable amount of money that I lost during COVID-2, COVID-related things, was $30,000. And that's for a small, family-owned business. I can't even imagine what some of these businesses have gone through, and so we really need to be cognizant of that.
Thank you. I just want to make a mention again that you're welcome to submit written questions for the candidates, either on the question cards provided or by posting a comment on Facebook. Volunteers will pick up your cards if you do have any questions, so just wanted to make everyone aware of that again. Moving on to question five, and we will start with Zach here. And this is an issue that, obviously, that's facing all of our communities, but what, if anything, should the City of Baxter do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
Yeah, I think we have a really great opportunity to do something about this. We have a good number of empty lots and tax-forfeited lots throughout the city that we have the ability to do things with. The city also controls a reasonable amount of land that we can make choices in how we zone those pieces of property and how we market those pieces of property, to encourage apartment buildings to come in, to encourage high-quality townhomes to come in, and development like that, that adds density and affordability in the right places, particularly close to our business district, where we can really add people without affecting the city very much. In fact, recently, we had a 289-unit apartment building set up plans right near our industrial park, and it's developments like that that I would want to encourage.
Amy, what, if anything, should the City of Baxter do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
I guess I would take a little bit more of a hands-off approach. I believe that being business-friendly and being tax-friendly is going to encourage investors to make those decisions and bring their businesses here and bring their builders to build things and things. I mean, I live in a neighborhood who had quite a few of those tax-forfeited lands, and we recently, in the last four years, had a builder come in and build single-family homes on all of those. We're pretty close to the new Baxter Elementary, so it makes good sense to have some affordable, some affordable, single-family homes there. And that's about it.
Thank you. Connie, what, if anything, should the City of Baxter do to increase the availability of affordable housing or multifamily housing?
I agree with what Zach said, as far as using some of the properties that we can use to develop and perhaps change the zoning requirements to make them higher density, reducing lot sizes, would also be a possibility. Affordable is such a variable, because what's affordable to the people in this room might be extremely different to someone else. So, you know, strongly related to the affordable housing is the workforce and the jobs that we have. Do they pay enough to be able to live in Baxter? And that's one of the things that's a frustration to many. I have a young son who's looking to purchase a home, would love to be in Baxter, but it's, you know, it's a continual, "God, it's expensive. What can we do to make it affordable?" That's, that would be a priority. Reducing lot sizes would be one. And multifamily housing, increasing density.
Thank you. We will shift back to Amy. Question number six. What are your goals for maintaining or improving local parks, trails, and recreational amenities?
Well, in my opening statements, I said that we've been very involved in our family with athletics and with the schools and things in the community. I know there are, we've made some, the community has made some improvements to places like Oscar Christopherson and places like that, much to the, I mean, the improvements have been fabulous, but there's still some room for improvement, probably in long-term planning. I'm not sure that the budget is there currently, but I know Oscar Christopherson, just because I mentioned it, was initially, was supposed to be four ball fields with a concession stand on the inside, and things like that are things that communities across the state have that attract tournaments and things like that, and that would spur economic growth. People come here. They fill up our resorts and our hotels, coming and traveling with their ball teams and things, and so that's just one area. But I only have 60 seconds, so that's all I can give you.
Connie, what are your goals for maintaining or improving local parks, trails, and recreational amenities?
Something that became increasingly obvious when we went through the pandemic is communities that have parks that are accessible, parks that are well-maintained. I think their usage went up over 50%, and Baxter's fortunate that we do have those. Making sure that they are handicap-accessible, making sure that there are activities that relate to people of all ages, pickleball, certainly, I'm a supporter of that, and it's no secret to anyone who ever has known me or listened to me, is that I am a very strong advocate of having a dog park in Baxter. And when it's appropriate, when it's allowed, I would be very, very thrilled to spearhead fundraising efforts. As a retired fire teacher, I know the importance of healthy families and active families, and we have so many jewels in Baxter that not just our community members enjoy it, but people from all over the state. I think it would be a disservice to not continue to improve those and develop more. And I have to stop.
Zach, what are your goals for maintaining or improving local parks, trails, and recreational amenities?
I'm going to start on a little bit of a different note. I definitely support our parks, and I think it's a great amenity that we need to have, but parks are expensive. If anyone was watching our recent council meetings, that 800 acres of parkland that we do have is, the current plan is in the millions of dollars if we're going to develop that out. And those can have economic development pluses, but it's going to be indirect for the most part. So, we need to be really diligent about how we do plan those things. Trails need to be strategically placed so that they're getting people places they want to go, and we don't have trails built out to nowhere because we love trails. They've got to have a purpose. The other thing with the current parkland and other areas in town that I'm a big supporter of is getting creative with the ability to encourage hunting. I think that that's an important part of our legacy and history in this state, and I support people having that opportunity in Baxter.
Thank you. Onto question seven. Connie, we will begin with you. In your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
After listening to Chief Eckstead, I think that one of the big concerns, not only for the police, but for many businesses and governments, are lack of qualified candidates. Pay, certainly. So many occupations, we aren't able to pay the employees what a livable wage so they could buy a home and live in Baxter. I hesitate the city council being overly involved, just because the head of the departments know what they need, more so than what we, as city council members, do. So, I respect what they're telling us, but then the first question has to be, can we afford it? And if not, what are creative ways to come up with the financial support that the police department does need and deserve? I guess I'll stop there.
Zach, in your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
I think the lack of recruits, like Connie mentioned, is a major issue. I think the more the city council gets involved in direct day-to-day work of the police department, more likely than not, the less healthy that's going to be, because we're not the people who are the experts in that area. And injecting opinions from our level is not something that I am a big fan of. I think our police department does an excellent job, and I have not heard any complaints from residents in the four years that I've been here. I just want to continue to support the professionalism of that department. I just want to continue to support the professionalism of that department and help them find ways to creatively attract good quality police officers for our city.
Thank you. Amy, in your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department? And what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
I mean, it seems pretty obvious, but I would say all the things that we've been talking about this evening, as far as making our, a community attractive to people, making the housing doable, making the, the property taxes so that people will choose a house in their range in our community. All of that will attract people in, in an economy where businesses all over the country, really, in the state are struggling to find and fill positions. It's not just police, it's, it's healthcare and, and teachers. And, and so helping our, helping our workforce in the police department or anywhere, maintain and really protect our exceptional workforce in that area is where we need to do it. Whether it's with benefits and pay and just making sure that they're taken care of.
Thank you. We will move on to question eight. We will begin with Zach. What is the most significant difference between you and your opponents in this race?
Well, I think, aside from the obvious. I, I think it's just everybody here comes from a very different background. And mine is uniquely suited for the, the city work, in my opinion. I have worked both inside and outside of city government in both a small place where we had the same number of police officers roughly as the city of Baxter and at St. Paul where we had 500-some, 600 police officers. I've, I've experienced the business world through financial advice and the financial services industry, and I understand how to run budgets. And I just think that my background is, is uniquely suited to help guide the council as we have our discussions.
Thank you. Amy, what is the most significant difference between you and your opponents in this race?
I, I mean, I wouldn't even differentiate between my opponents, I guess. But I, I would say just the council currently doesn't have business owners. We have state employees and government employees, and we have some teachers and all wonderful, all wonderful backgrounds and, and caring individuals. As far as I can tell, I've interacted with each of them. But I come at it from a, from a business perspective. I worked in healthcare for, excuse me, healthcare for six, six years before I opened our first business. And we now currently have two businesses. And, and like I said at the beginning, having the perspective of somebody who collects sales tax for the state and the county and, and the city and has to send that in every quarter on penalty of major fines and jail time is just a different perspective that I can offer.
Thank you. Connie, we will close this question with you. What is the most significant difference between you and your opponents in this race?
Significant difference, first of all, I think is the fact that I'm essentially retired from a career aside from serving the city of Baxter, which allows me more time, I think, to be available. I've had the luxury of getting to know nearly everyone that lives in Baxter, thanks to my career and education. And I, someone just out of the blue talked to me the other day, and they said, we were so thankful that you decided to run. And I said, why? Well, because we know you are a person of great integrity, and we know how much you care. And that certainly isn't to say that my coworkers or co-people at the table do not. But I think that I live my life that way, and I think that's essential to be a person of integrity if you want to serve the community.
Thank you. We will transition. We have a few audience questions here, so we will transition to the, to the audience questions. And Amy, we will begin with you. Please comment on the city role in addressing affordable childcare, which is often a key issue for working families.
Okay. I mean, I think I could be wrong, having not worked in government. But I think that a lot of that is zone, like allowing private daycares to exist, making it, some of the regulations and things like that that get in the way. I, I mean, I have a, I have a couple of family members who have really struggled recently to find affordable childcare. It's a real problem, and there's wait lists for our daycares and our, and our preschools in the area. And so I think a lot of that is, is getting out of the way a little bit and allowing them to, to operate and making it a little bit easier for people to do that.
Thank you.
While keeping it safe, can I add that?
Connie, please comment on the city's role in addressing affordable childcare, which is often a key issue for working families.
Affordable childcare, I think, is, again, related to affordable to whom. And that is tied into the wages that our businesses are able to pay. My, my dream would be to have a childcare affiliate with every senior center housing development in the area. And perhaps by sharing the workforce between centers, it would expand the opportunities, and it would also be of benefit to not only the, the young children, but the seniors. I think the, obviously, having more options, whether that's private or commercial centers, I think we just need to have options.
Thank you. Zach, please comment on the city's role in addressing affordable childcare, which is often a key issue for working families.
I'd say because of the fact that the way that that system is currently funded at levels that are well outside of our control, and that depends on somebody having to make enough money to pay somebody to do the job of taking care of their kids, that makes it very difficult. And the city's going to only be able to affect that through making it easy and simple for a development, like Connie referenced, to add a childcare center to a large building or through our creative use of, of zoning within the city. As well as we, we have that opportunity of some land that is available to us that we can find a way to encourage affordable childcare to move into the city by, by helping spur that directly through our control of certain pieces of property.
Thank you. Connie, we will move on to you with our next audience question. What do you see as the greatest opportunity and greatest challenge for the city? And how would you address that?
I think the greatest opportunity is in spite, or we've had so much growth the last few years, but still, as it stands right now, I think our city is still only 50% developed. So we have, we have the room to do that. I think managing it and, and again, going back to the long-range plan for the city, what are we going to need 10 years down the road, 30 years down the road? Now I forgot the second part of the question.
Yeah, it's, it's the greatest challenge for the city, and how would you address it?
I think at times, the greatest challenge may be putting the brakes on a little bit because you don't want to do too much without proper plans in place. So grow, but at a respectable, steady pace, not just because we can, it needs to be planned.
Zach, what do you see as the greatest opportunity and greatest challenge for the city? And how would you address them?
I'd go along similar lines in that it is the expansion of the city. 20, 25 years ago, this was not the city that you would see. And, and things like a Costco here were not something anyone probably expected. And we really need to, to balance that growth and make sure that we're not just expanding outside of our capabilities to, to deal with it. We need to make sure that our roads are ready for it so that we don't create a mess by having too much stuff too close together without having a plan for that. But at the same time, we have to balance out the single-family development and, and making sure that we don't have such large lots and such expansion that the tax rate is going to be forced up by having fewer homes to, to spread that kind of a growth burden across.
Thank you. Amy, we will close this question with you. What do you see as the greatest opportunity and greatest challenge for the city? And how would you address it?
I mean, I guess I would go with growth, obviously. We've all seen the increased traffic and the increased just busyness of town this summer. I, I mean, I, maybe I'm alone in that, but it feels like it's busier even than it was pre-pandemic, just even in the middle of the week, times that weren't common. And in my line of business, I have run into many families who have relocated up here. And so we are growing. You know, our schools have to accommodate, our businesses have to accommodate, our workforce has to accommodate. I think it's a great opportunity as far as, you know, we're talking about business development and business growth. We have new people and fresh blood. And so assuming that we can manage the growth responsibly, taking advantage of those new people and encouraging some of the opportunities that they bring because of their specialties or their backgrounds.
Thank you. Our next audience question, we will begin with Zach. Zach, how are you able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions?
Yeah, I guess at the, the council level, so far, it has not been as difficult as the internet might, internet might have you believe. When you're dealing with people face-to-face and actually working out issues, yeah, sometimes people get red in the face, and sometimes things don't go smoothly. But I, I choose to do my best to listen at least twice as much as I speak. I don't really like to try to argue over people, and I like to hear people out. And I've found that if you let somebody tell their side of an issue or discuss what they want to discuss before you begin what you have to say, everybody seems to come out at least understanding why we disagree, if not coming to a more moderated solution between the two parties involved.
Thank you. Amy, how are you able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions?
I second it not being on social media or online is, is key. So the, the video calls and things make it difficult. But when you're face-to-face, I, I tend to follow a rule that my mom taught me. Ask a lot of questions. If you disagree with somebody or if you're not finding common ground, keep digging and find out why and find out their reasoning. And a lot of times you can find some commonality in your goals, even if your purpose or the way that you want to get there is not the same. And that's just, that's the first way to, to do that. I tend to be, I tend to ask a lot of questions. We were talking about that before. I like to, I like to sit there and I think, why is nobody asking this question? And just, and just offer a different perspective, or at least offer the people who maybe disagree with you the opportunity to hear or think about it in a different way and hopefully arrive at a... I don't know what the word is. I lost it.
No problem. Connie, we will close this question with you. How are you able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions?
Well, I've been married for 33 years, and certainly I've learned to be a good listener. Seriously, though, I think echoing what Zach said, having the two ears and the one mouth, it's so important to listen. Disagreements are going to happen in almost every single walk of life, every single decision that's going to be made. But it really just comes down to respect. There's three sides to issues, their side, my side, and then somewhere in the middle is usually the factual side. So I think basing an opinion on facts is also critical.
Thank you. We do have time for one more audience question. If anyone here has a question, feel free to raise your hand. If not, okay, we will transition into our closing statements. We will begin with Connie. And you have 30 seconds to provide a closing statement.
Decades ago, my grandfather, Charles Houstead, ran for governor. And small world, someone found one of his postcards from 60, 70 years ago. And on his postcard, he had written, "A public office is a public trust." And I've never been told I'm not trustworthy. And it's a character that I think, a characteristic that I think is ingrained and developed if it's something that's important to you. And I think I've proven throughout my years in education and, oh, darn.
Zach, please end with your closing statement.
All right. I appreciate the opportunity I've had over the last four years to help the city of Baxter. I have been involved in some decisions that anybody could say were good ones, and I'm sure some people would say there are bad ones. And, and that's just kind of part of the way it goes when you can't predict the future and don't know exactly what's going to happen. But I think that overall, I can be a useful voice on the city council for the next four years. Thank you.
Amy, we will close with your closing statement.
Perfect. Well, I just want to thank you guys for listening and asking questions and being involved. I appreciate all of you that are here. I'm really excited about the opportunity of serving the Baxter community for the next four years. I hope to offer a diverse opinion that maybe isn't existing in that place and developing a relationship and a communication with the residents going forward. And I will just ask for your vote. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to Amy, Connie, and Zach. And that concludes tonight's Baxter Forum. Let's give one more round of applause for our candidates, community sponsors, event venue, and volunteers. You will be able to find out more about our candidates and voting information at the back of the room or out in the hall. I'm not sure which it is. It's probably out on the side over there. Thank you very much. And again, remember to vote. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th, and early voting begins Friday, September 23rd. Please go to vote411.org for accurate information regarding your voter registration, what's on your ballot, and ways to vote. So on behalf of the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the Brainerd Dispatch, we would like to thank you all for coming tonight, and have a good evening.